Thank you.
Checked our sack pocket, and then she made me change jackets.
Called order, the City of Columbiana City Council meeting on this May 2nd, 2023. I'll ask Deanne Davis to give the invocation, and then while strong to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, bless those who hold office in the government of our city, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice, and help them to use their authority to serve our citizens faithfully. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republican Party's standers.
Deanne, we call the roll.
Decker?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Tutilio?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received a copy of the meeting minutes of April 18th, 2023. You don't have any questions or comments on those minutes? During that, they'll be accepted as submitted. Do not have any communications to read, and I do not have any readings of commissions or reports of commissions and boards. We'll move to recognition, recognition of persons desiring to appear. First, we have Mary please to discuss the St. Jude's Festival, to be held on June 16th, 17th, and 18th, 4:00 to 9:00 p.m.
My name is Marian Clancy. I'm the Director of St. Jude's Our Lady of Lourdes Festival. As the mayor said, the festival will be held June 16th, 17th, and 18th, and we changed the times this year from 4:00 to 9:00. I come before you tonight to request the presence of our mayor, Mr. Noel. There are opening ceremonies and our ribbon cutting on Friday, June 16th at 3:45, if you can possibly make it. We will also celebrate veterans night that evening, and I will contact the Legion as I would have. I'd like to have the color guard perform like they did before, do a flag ceremony. And also, I would like to know if we could maybe have the Legion riders, would that be possible for them to come? Back in that area of the church?
I can contact the, uh, the president.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll see what, uh, we can do.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'll give you my number, so you can contact me when you find out. Thank you. I have a couple other requests. I will meet two police officers each evening from 6:30 to 9:30. And also, I would like to request that the street department would put up no parking signs on Sixth Street, as well as on the other side of Seventh Street, as we're going to have the horse-drawn wagon rides again this year. We will also be having a 5K and a one-mile fundraiser this year at 3:00, 3:00 p.m. on Saturday. And I think Crystal Sinbidi Boggs already made arrangements, um, with everyone up here. I do believe she did that already?
I do recall that, yes.
Okay. All right. Also, I'm having an 18-foot inflatable fire truck slide for the children this year. And I was wondering, do I have to contact, um, Chris Constanzo about that? I would like to have a couple of police officers, or, I'm sorry, firemen, maybe to come and just have some pictures with the children. I think that would maybe be really good.
Yeah, we can get ahold of the chief. We'll have him get ahold of you.
Uh, any questions about the festival?
What time are you wanting the riders there?
Um, probably about 3:30 on Friday, would you say?
Okay.
We're gonna start the ceremonies sharp, 3:45. Keep it right on time.
Like last.
Any other questions?
Did you work with the chief on the need for police?
Uh, uh, we'll be together to reach out to the first staff that did last year. Because we'll have the entertainment tent, and we'll have beer and wine at the entertainment tent, and of course, they just stay there. They're not allowed to walk the grounds. Um, and, uh, so that's what we need them for. Any other questions?
Good luck.
Okay, thank you so much. Everyone there.
I, I like to make a motion that we approve the event as it was presented.
Second.
We approve the event as presented. Questions? Deanne, we call the roll.
Decker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. It's a good event for the community. Uh, next, I would like to call up Sean Zentler, and he's got a couple items on the agenda, so I know he's not afraid to talk, so, um, I'll let him go ahead and, uh.
I don't know if it's on the day, but it's a good chair. For the Beer Fest. Um, we wanted to come to council, because, uh, I think we have, uh, this is our third year of having Columbian Craft Beer Fest. Uh, we bring in, uh, 11 to 12 breweries from all around Northeastern Ohio. Uh, we have it out at, uh, town centers, and we're all groups and the makers to have it again this year. We will be having, uh, three bands. But we're reaching, whatever, they can sing, or we can have us do this, uh, show a picture for more, uh, show a picture, you know, sort of, for, uh, I think we've got lots of, uh, calendar, uh, lots of, you know, local, uh, culture.
Yeah, I just heard recently that Numbers isn't operating anymore.
There was talk of them coming back, that it's not a problem.
Yeah.
So we, uh, again, we'll have three bands, right? We'll have numerous vendors, three or four brewer trucks. It's really a nice, uh, event. I'm glad you didn't have the problems at all with anyone in the board that we, a year before. We are gonna be raising money again for the stadium. So I guess I can go into that now.
Yeah.
If you have any questions on Beer Fest.
Just real quick, how much rain are you gonna order this year?
Yes, we moved it up to the 23rd. Yeah, so.
See, actually, they actually scheduled this Beer Fest for now. That's why we're getting all the rain.
Yes, we, yeah, we'll meet some officers, and I'll get people after we're, uh, layered. As you guys all were, um, you know, our park has been completely revived, let's say. It's looking beautiful except for a couple of structures. And I know there's an agreement between the city and, and the school. With the first thing that we're taking on as Columbian Athletic Boosters is we're trying to replace the stands themselves. Uh, they were built in 1931, 36 area. Um, they're in dire need of being replaced. We truly had our kickoff for fundraising, uh, at Birdfish about a month ago. And we'll tell you what, we've raised about a hundred grand so far, which is a nice number to get started. Uh, we have a long way to go. Uh, we do have some, some people that are helping us. Uh, we have, we have a full committee, uh, with people from the park board, and I've reached out to Lance and Rick and, and everyone. And we're, we're trying to make this definitely, uh, a ground-up organization for everyone to get involved and help us raise these funds. We, the first phase of the, this funding is to replace the stands there, and we hope to have that accomplished by the end of this year. Uh, they'll play football there this year, right after this year, where hopefully they will have people in there with jackhammers and taking it out at that point. Uh, there's a couple things that we were a little concerned with, which we talked park board about a little bit already, you know, Christmas in the park. Uh, it would be a little bit away from, should, wouldn't see much, especially at night. Um, I've handed everyone out here our, our little flyer or brochure. Um, what we want to do is bring some pride back into our stadium. Uh, it needs it. Uh, I know Heath Coach will be there. I know some of you guys played there. So we're, we're looking for everyone to, to try to get involved and help us raise the money to, to get this, uh, completed. We'll have events throughout the summer. We're probably gonna have something at Hillwill, um, late spring, early summer. We'll be having something at the park, um, you know, like the old spaghetti dinner type fundraiser thing. And a lot of that is to, more to get the word out to, uh, you know, some of the businesses and some of the other entities to, to help us raise these funds. Does anyone have any questions on the stadium?
Major project.
It is a major project.
We appreciate all the work you're doing. Something definitely needs done. So, uh, I think we're all supporting you and, you know, wish you the best. Any other comments?
Okay, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Lance, do you wanna make some comments before we keep this?
Okay, finally, we do have a matching donation. If anyone gives money, someone will match that. If you give a grand, someone else will give a grand, all that. Uh, matching? Uh, do you know who we're doing this summer for sure? And, you know, we'll get a little off, we'll, 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 uh, I'm gonna talk at first, and then, uh, do it now.
About the students?
One of the students, who, who this one is, right? It's, you know, it's from the student. Talking about the, I'm talking about the, you know, the class. You want me to talk about, you pretty start, jerk, lunch, or, uh, Lance, you're gonna make some comments that, uh.
Okay, next item on the agenda, you have, um, Deanne Davis of the Columbiana Community Foundation Secretary. She's presenting her grant checks to us. And you notice the youth in the back of the room, which is great to see you all here. They are the entrepreneur class that we've been talking about, bragging about for a couple of years now. But, uh, this class, uh, especially, uh, April 14th, they, uh, presented their presentation to the staple state school board superintendent out at the high school. And then on April 18th, they made us proud over at Carnegie, PA. And, um, ha- actually, have you come on up while we can, we can, I can, you stand up here while I talk about you. How's that? So I'm gonna pass out a, um, the mural that they designed. Uh, it's a piece of artwork that they're working with them. We're just, yeah, we'll just have you stand right there for now. It's good. We're not gonna ask you to present tonight. Okay?
Trish Meesos is our teacher of the class, and we want her up here.
Yes, yes. You don't wanna get in the way with anything around here.
You guys should turn around away with the camera, too.
Yes. So we really appreciate everything they've done, uh, this class, uh, the entrepreneur class, if you recall, they did the, uh, Columbiana Corridor a few years ago, and this year, they, we, we picked the, uh, parking lot, uh, of the Columbiana Plaza. We asked them, we gave them a blank slate, basically, and asked them what they think they would do with it. And one of their first things that they came up with was a pretty fancy piece of artwork. And, um, actually, I think this is the first time that the mayor and, uh, President Council Skip Liston's actually seen this, the artwork that they're, they're submitting. So, uh, it's, it's getting closer. So what we wanted to do when we worked with it, with the, uh, entrepreneur classes, get some wins, you know, early wins. You know, nobody wants to do something and just have it sit on the shelf. So we had these two murals, uh, that they designed. We worked with Holloway. Uh, Venny Holloway, um, was actually, uh, he actually helped, uh, give us a direction, give them the direction on the Columbiana County mural, which will feature different things throughout the Columbiana County. And it'll, it'll be like a historic, uh, stamp. And then the, the other mural that'll be, take most of the room up, I think, how many feet is it? Do we know?
So long.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's 90 feet by 12 feet or something, and this is gonna look like a, um, retro, uh, postcard. Is it greetings from Columbiana, the nicest place in America? Yeah, so really, they wanted to, they really wanted to have some, some place to, you know, bring, bring their friends and families to. And we think it, it's gonna be a tourist attraction. And actually, the tourism board helped, uh, write a letter of support for this grant, uh, request to the Community Foundation. We're gonna put both of those, uh, murals up for $8,700, and they have fully funded that, so we really, really thank them. Uh, if you, if you recall, you know, we were, we were here last year talking about how much the Community Foundation has meant to us. Uh, I believe last year, we were over 300,000 in the last three years, so we're, we're adding to that. You'll see that tonight. But, uh, just wanted to, you know, introduce you to the class that we've been talking about, and, uh, you know, you, you've, you've made us really proud, and, and it, it continues, so the, uh, the different, there were 10 different communities there that they presented their project to. We also brought the eighth grade class that was doing a recycling, uh, project, and they've both been reached out to, and other communities wanna replicate what we're doing over here, and they're, they're, um, it was Carnegie and Homestead, and, and it's, it's just really nice to, to, to see that, um, other communities are interested in what we're doing over here, so. I would wanna thank you.
I would like to say that having that signage on that wall there that's right now blank is gonna be great. And I think their design work on signage was fantastic. But this project, though, also involves, they are working with the Schmitz, who have the parking, the plaza in the back, and they're working with the holloways. We've been working together as a group, the business people and the community, they're working on some parking lot designs and restructuring there. We've got some fantastic plans for how we can try to bring that plaza more out to the main street to give it a view of, of coming out there. But these students have done a tremendous job, and I think to have the state superintendent come to Columbiana and listen to the presentation, and she was very impressed. Don't you guys think she was impressed? And, uh, that they do a power, these students did a PowerPoint presentation, probably lasted 20 minutes, half an hour. They used no notes. There was nothing written on the, on any of their, of the work that they put on the PowerPoint, and they just described what they wanna do. They divided up into groups, are working on different aspects of the project, so we can't be any more proud of these young people and the work that they've done. It's been fantastic, and we are so, we are so lucky in this community to have the Community Foundation to take something that was a dream and turn it into reality, and I think that is, I'm really looking forward to it. So thank you guys for all your work, and, uh, trying to make it continue.
Then we'll turn it over to Deanne, now that we just said.
You can't let an old retired teacher not come out of here and say anything about these kids. You are the future of Columbiana. We've been preaching that for a number of years. If you look along the folks up here, we are, we are a little bit grayer, and we're a little bit tired, okay? Think about this. When you go to institutions of higher learning, okay, don't forget where you came from. These are your roots. This is the legacy that you are leaving, and that lady back there is terrific. I've had the privilege of being an associate of hers for probably five, maybe 10 years, so thank you, Trish. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't, I can't say enough about this group. Um, I made a statement when we were at Carnegie, I just, I won't say who I made the statement to. Uh, but, uh, he happens to be the father of a couple of these young men. And I just made a statement to them. I, I love these kids so much, I'd like to take them home, and he offered me two right away. But there wa, there was a statement that was made when we were in Carnegie by one of the people down there, and, uh, she said that the presentation that they put on down there was better than any college-level presentation she's ever seen. That was, that was a real tribute to what you guys did, and, and Trish, how you led them through that, that I know this, no, no notes, no nothing on these slides is, is a big deal, uh, and, uh, you hold fast to that. That's really good.
Any comments? Okay, we'll turn it over to Deanne.
Well, one of the goals of the Community Foundation is to support worthwhile projects in Columbiana, and we felt that this was definitely a, a worthwhile project. Glad to see more beautification of our great city, so at this time, it is my pleasure to present the check for $8,700.
No hiding in the back, you guys.
For taller, you skipped.
Yes. And they did all that work for, for, for nothing for us, you know, it's a, you know, consultancy would have been much more than that, but, uh, Humtown sponsored a lunch, so they all got to go to Chick-fil-A on the way home, so. We walked in there, Chick-fil-A, 35 students, give or take, and, and where else can they, uh, handle that many people? And it was pretty slick, so.
Well, I think their next goal should be then to convince Chick-fil-A to put a restaurant in Columbiana.
When we went into Chick-fil-A, everybody got a lunch. I saw several of the boys sit down, eat that lunch, go back up and get two more.
Well, we appreciate you. It really means a lot that you all came tonight. That was really great. That was fantastic. I know you're all busy, got a lot of things to do, so we appreciate you coming here. Very important to us. Thank you very much. So, thanks for coming, and we appreciate it.
And the other check that I have to present tonight, an ongoing project that, uh, the Community Foundation had supported in the past, and we're glad to be able to support again for the next phase of the fix the sticks of the old chapel in the cemetery. So if the Historical Society members would like to come forward, I have a check for them for $12,000.
What a fantastic project.
Yeah, and you've been very innovative on fundraisers, so, uh, I know many of the people up here helped you on the one in the cemetery. They all told a story about that, and then, um, appreciate you working with the, the youth out at the school, right? The second and third graders, I, I believe. Very good.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Lance for the manager's report.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Keeping the spirit of fundraising, we, uh, we found a grant opportunity last week, right after the students came back from Carnegie. It was the very next day, and, uh, got a, an email from the county re- reutilization corporation, and they, they're looking for beautification projects for your downtown. So we, um, I called Trish, uh, that day and said, we need a letter of, uh, support for this project. It's a quick turnaround time, and we reached out to the mayor and also, um, Bryce from, um, the tourism, and we submitted another grant application for $10,000 to work on the parking lot itself. And if you, if you go up there to the parking lot, we're gonna take, take out that median, it's kind of a raised sidewalk, if you will. We're going to pave the entire walk, uh, or pave the entire lot, and then we're going to paint a, a mural-type thing on the, on the ground. It's gonna be a walkway, and it's gonna lead back to the Columbiana Plaza, like the Hogans Bakery area. So, um, the, the students, you know, I challenged them and said, look, we, we need, you know, we need to take this idea and run with it, and, um, there was a borough manager from, uh, over in PA that had seen them present and, uh, recommended this idea of putting the walk all the way back to the plaza, just from their presentation. So he sent us some, uh, sent us some images that they did it in their, um, in their borough, and, um, gave that to the students, and then they basically photoshopped that on there, and then we submitted that, uh, $10,000 grant request to the, to the county to, uh, do that portion of the project, and hopefully we hear back from in a couple weeks, so. Uh, the eighth grade class, uh, that was there at Carnegie, they have been, um, contacted by Carnegie and Homestead to get their program. I kinda mentioned that earlier, but, uh, that was really, really cool to see them reaching out to the eighth grade class and Stephanie Baylor's class, and Stephanie, she's done a great job, and, uh, they, you know, the eighth grade class did their presentation, uh, to the chamber in early January, February, something, and they, they, they've gotten a lot better. By the time they went to, uh, Carnegie, they were, Stephanie had them very well prepared and, and impressed everybody.
They were polished.
Yep. Okay, so next, um, that progress committee that we've been working with, with the class, um, we've been invited to East Palestine, uh, in May. We're going to, um, do a workshop with some of their council members on the eleventh. The eleventh is also a day where, uh, RCAP, the Rural Communities Assistance Program, National Program, they are bringing their staff from around the nation to visit Columbiana that day. They're gonna stay in Columbian all day. They're gonna start out at the school. They're going to meet our, um, entrepreneur class at, uh, ten fifteen. And then we're going to take, uh, tours of the wastewater plant, the water plant. Because RCAP had a hand in doing that when we, you know, had, had the plant built in, uh, oh-five. And then, uh, again in twenty eighteen for the water plant. So, these, um, you know, National RCAP people are coming. And we're gonna get to, uh, show them, you know, how they helped us get, uh, you know, get some, get some nice utilities out there and also introduce them to the class that, uh, that is, is basically part of the RCAP program. Because, uh, RCAP works with us, with the progress committee. And, you know, their, their idea was to reach out to the, the school and, and work with them. So it's, uh, kind of all intertwined and it's gonna be a nice day. The, uh, RCAP is actually renting a bus. They're bringing forty people from Cleveland. They're all staying up in Cleveland. And have a forty, forty, forty-eight passenger bus. And they're gonna drive down through our town and, uh, have lunch here and, and spend the day, much like the OECD did last year. But, you know, just on a RCAP, uh, I guess it'll be RCAP day. Let's see, um, we did submit a, um, ODOT grant last week to the small cities. Typically, we have a deadline for that in, uh, in June, it's mid-June. But this was a special ask for congestion projects. And it had a much tighter timeline and we did make that. And that would be trying to widen the road from Best Western up to the bridge. Have no idea, um, you know, how we'll, how we'll fare there. But, um, May sixteenth, we're going to, uh, present that idea to them via Zoom to their, their board that makes the decisions. We had picked the asphalt contractor, um, to provide our asphalt, uh, a couple of meetings ago. And tonight you have on the agenda, we're gonna rescind that. The company is, um, just was not able to fulfill what we needed. So, um, thankfully, uh, Mark got ahold of them, talked to them and, and it's, um, you know, they, they realized that they can't, they could not produce what we needed them to. So, um, we have another, the second bidder is, is on the docket to approve for tonight. Couple of weeks ago, we, um, learned that, uh, the Eastern Ohio Development Alliance, which is, uh, it's, it's basically a, it's a non-profit organization that, uh, covers sixteen counties, southeastern Ohio. And they work on development projects. And they had a series of, of awards that they were looking at. And we nominated the Makos, uh, for the Tourism Award. And, uh, last Friday, uh, the mayor and I went down with the Makos and they accepted, uh, you know, the Tourism Award by the Eastern Ohio Development Alliance. And that was a very big honor for them to, um, have selected them. There was some really good projects, they said. It was a, it was a nice day. It was a nice, uh, event. And, uh, Yoda, w- we've been members, uh, for, for as long as I, I know. They're, they're actually housed in the same, um, same office as Omega that we're always talking about down in, uh, Cambridge, Ohio. So, um, there should be a press release, uh, coming out. Hopefully the paper covers that. But, um, you know, the Makos are doing so much for our community. You know, and honoring the, the history of, uh, Columbiana and, uh, Harvey Firestone. So it's, uh, it's been really nice and it's, uh, nice that, um, you know, to get them some recognition for doing that, so. We're working on a, there's a business in town, uh, it's an industrial business that's looking to expand. They, uh, called us last week, uh, it was Wednesday. Just happened to be that ODOT was gonna be here the next day. So we lined that meeting up. And then ODOT turned us on to Team Neo, which is Jobs, Ohio. And we're working with that business to try to get them help to do their project and also maybe improve the roads. So, well, we may be coming back to you with a project later in the year for, for that. So anytime a business, uh, is going to, you know, invest in their, in their, uh, in their business and maybe create jobs, we can leverage that to help improve the roads. So we're hoping to apply for some grants for that. Uh, tonight on the, on the agenda, we have legislation to go out to bid for the one million gallon tank resurfacing, both the inside and out. And hopefully we can, uh, get a contractor on a contract, uh, in, in June to, uh, get them to do that this year. Notice, uh, survey crews have been out and around, um, birdfish and that area, all the way down the Pittsburgh Street. Those, uh, two, two stormwater projects. That being the first one is, is, you know, getting well underway as far as the engineering. And then they're gonna go up to Beverly and Ray and work on those, those areas. So you'll see some surveyors out doing that. Street Department, they, uh, cleaned some stormlines and catch basins, preparing to do some early paving. We hope to do it right after Memorial Day. Where we're preparing to replace a couple culverts in town. And one of it, which is we're gonna lower, which will help drain, uh, the entire area a little better. Had a, uh, bobcat breakdown, piece of equipment breakdown at the water plant. We're trying to get that repaired. We did Hall Lime last week, which is, uh, our lo- Lime Lagoons. We need to do that yearly. And, um, we had crews out there doing that. We had a, uh, inflow, um, consultant out at the wastewater plant to, uh, investigate. Basically, they're doing a study on a, on a trunk line to see if, uh, there's leaks. Uh, the Park and Cemetery, they, uh, finished the bird, birdhouses. Uh, and that project is complete now. They worked with the, uh, grade school kids to do that. So we thank.
He does everything, keeps us from like polluting our storms and doing birdhouses with kids.
Yeah.
Okay, now. I have to church twice. I had no idea what was happening. Okay, so, um, out at the, out at the Park and Cemetery, uh, the, the new pool filters, uh, are installed. And the plumbing is getting wrapped up very soon. We also had a safety day out there today, I believe it was. We're, um, we're doing, um, confined space entry training. And it was a nice, clean atmosphere to do it in. We did purchase the pool paint. We found some. We were worried about that. And they're preparing to paint as soon as this weather changes. Uh, last week, we had a leak inspection, uh, company come in and they were fixing leaks at the pool. Not only in the pool, but I, I believe in the plumbing. And I hoped, uh, you know, hope that helps, uh, and repair that. And I don't know exactly how large the leaks were, but I'll have to, have to ask him how they did out there. Uh, electric department, uh, the contractors finished up the system upgrade on the south side. I also should note, uh, this is a good time to do it, that, uh, I mean, a lot can happen in two weeks, right? I mean, we were sitting here two weeks ago. I never mentioned any safety award or any, 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 any awards or anything. But, uh, so two weeks ago, we had a council meeting, two or three weeks ago. And then the very next day, we had a press release come from AMP and talk about our reliability award that our electric department won. And, uh, I guess that was in the paper. Um, I know it was in the Salem News. I did not, uh, I don't, not sure what day it was in the, uh, in the morning journal. But, um, you know, we just talked about, you know, those last two storms. You know, having our own service crew to do that is, is key. And, um, you know, we, and we understand and, and, uh, under- and we know that, uh, any outage is, is a, is a, you know, real hindrance to, to people and a real inconvenience to people. But, uh, we try to get you back on as, as, as fast as we can. And I think that our crews proved, uh, and that's for this year, you know, th- they've done really well, uh, for those two storms. So, they be nationally recognized. We had no idea that that was even happening. It was just released and, uh, got ahead of us a little bit because I didn't even get to tell you about it. So, but, um, but, um, yeah, it was nice that, uh, they were recognized. So do want to thank them, uh, for that. And, uh, all the hours that they're spent, you know, I've said it time and time again. Some of them, you know, they leave their families. They don't have electric at home and they leave their families to come and fix our electric. So we do appreciate that. They are our first responders in the storm, so. And I believe that's, uh, everything.
Thank you, Lance. Um, any questions? If there are none, we'll move to, uh, you all received a copy of the bill list of, uh, May second, twenty twenty-three. Anybody have any questions or comments on the bill list? If there are none, um, we hopefully accepted. We have no old business on the agenda tonight. And I would like to start, uh, new business by asking for a motion to read all ordinances by tide lonely.
So moved, second.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yes.
I would also like to entertain a motion to read all ordinances as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have any color roll?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three-one-seven-six, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing city manager to advertise for bids for the purpose of entering into a contract for the furnishing of the necessary construction materials, equipment and labor for one million gallon water tank painting at the water treatment plant of the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Trish, second.
Rick, I just have one quick question. It's not really on this exactly. But, um, when I printed out my ordinances, I noticed there were two of them numbered thirty-one seventy-six. And this is one of them. And then the one that's actually thirty-one seventy-eight came to me as thirty-one seventy-six, so. Okay. Just to correct.
I think we corrected that in the, in the, in your final, final package.
Earlier package?
It was the first pack, yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that it was corrected on the act order.
That was all. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do you have any color roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three-one-seven-seven, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing city manager to rescind the acceptance of the bid. Terminate the agreement or contract with Shelley and Sanson, Inc., Marzay, Inc., fourteen-five, excuse me, fourteen thousand five hundred North Bailey Road, North Jackson, Ohio, four-four-four-five-one, for the purchase of asphalt, asphalt.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any questions on the motion? Do you have any color roll?
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three-one-seven-eight, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Tri County Asphalt Materials, Inc. P.O. Box three-three-eight, North Lime, Ohio, four-four-four-five-two, for purchase of asphalt.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Questions on the motion? Do you have any color roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Hey, I have a motion. I'm seeking a motion to accept the contract between the LPBA, dispatchers and the city.
So moved. Second.
Second. Questions or comments? Do you have any color roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Hey, we are planning on.
We do not need to have an executive session. Correct. Yep. Yep.
At this time on the agenda, uh, we want to give an opportunity, uh, for anyone out there that would like to make a comment, observation, humorous anecdote.
No pop buildings out there. Don't give them that.
Yes, mine is Tuesday. Not a great event. Our tourism bureau does a heck of a job. A lot of good events for a good organization.
Now, Sean, I'm gonna ask again, did you order rain for that or?
Any other comments? I'd like to ask our council members, anyone like to make a comment if you see a chance?
They always look at me when it comes about this time. Uh, hey, it's just nice to see some, some faces and, and smiling, uh, when you walk in here and walk out. And, uh, it, uh, it, it's nice for us to, uh, listen to your feedback and take it, uh, take it to the next level. So thank you.
Comments?
Yeah, I've got one. Um, I'm going back to, uh, way back when, beginning of pandemic, when we passed the motions to, uh, you know, allow signs and tables and, and that on Main Street. And we extended that, uh, I believe last year to the end of this year, if I remember correctly. So, um, just as a general note, I'd like to, to either, for, at the end of this year, at some point in this year, either make those permanent, um, by going through the process or else letting them go because clearly the emergency has passed. So I, I'm all for making it permanent, um, but I, I just think it's time to finish the legislative process and, and get, do them the right way.
The, the, uh, stamp owners downtown, uh, most of them have taken advantage of this. And it really looks good, makes the street look much better. Uh, I would also be in favor of continuing this or making this permanent.
It's like it's a thing that Mark needs to shut down his agenda.
He's, he's writing it now. We'll vote next, next, uh, two weeks from now.
Any other comments anyone likes to make?
I think it's, um, I just want to make the comment when we went down to Amish country to get the award or for the Makos to get the award. Um, it, it was really a good day to spend time with them. And it's really tremendous the amount of what they're doing for our community. And it's just such a great thing to do. The people at the organization were like, we were blown away by the.
The people at the organization were like, we were blown away by the application. Could not believe everything that they've done to the community and the recognition of the eighteen eighty barn and uh, the other things that they've done there. So it was really an enthrall day to spend with them and see what they want to do. And um, and I think they're all in everything. So I think it's great. Any other comments? Well, hearing none, I could entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.